All right, thank you. All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board Meeting. It is Monday, February 1st. I call this meeting at 7 o'clock. Consistent with Governor Sununu's Executive Order 2020-04, Emergency Order Number 12, board members will be attending the meeting remotely. The public is invited to call 603-766-5646. Enter participant code 685562. If you wish to make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting, please wait for the chair's instructions and then press star nine. Your microphone will be unmuted, and you will be directed to state your name and address prior to making your public comment. You can also email your public comment to Denise.Moran@SAU19.org prior to 4 o'clock this afternoon. In the subject line, you would indicate public comment for today's date, and it's a Goffstown School Board meeting. Please include your name and address and limit your comments to no more than 500 words. The board reserves the right to read your public comment during the meeting. However, any public comment will be included in the official meeting minutes. The board meeting can be viewed on GTV16 on demand and will also be streamed live on the GTV YouTube channel. I'm just going to take attendance real quick. Once I say your name, just tell me if you're here and alone. Rheta Chaffey?
Here and alone.
Thank you. Ellen Vermakowicz?
Here and alone.
Tim Stetson?
Here and alone.
Terry Fisher?
Here and alone.
Jared Talbot?
Here and alone.
Janelle O'Brien?
Here and alone.
Ginny McKinnon?
Here and alone.
And I'm Heather Trapez, and I'm here and alone. We have our student rep Caleb Hagner.
Here and alone.
Thank you. Our superintendent Brian Balky?
Good evening. I'm present and alone in my office.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Mary Claire Berry?
Here and alone.
And our business administrator Scott Gross?
Here and alone.
And the executive administrator Denise Morin.
Here and alone.
Thank you, everybody. So if we could stand and say the pledge? I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. This vote was ready to just draw.
Well, good evening, everyone. So our first item up on the agenda is approving the January 18, 2021 minutes. Before I take a motion, did anybody see anything? Any changes? Any? Anything out of the ordinary? Ellen? Did you have your hand up? You're muted, Ellen.
I had a couple of questions on page three, halfway down. It starts with Ellen Vermakowicz inquired. Does that paragraph make sense to you all? Because I was asking for the percent of the total budget that we had to return, that we were, had available to return to taxpayers. But then it went into the 2.5% to 5% contingency. Does that paragraph make sense to people? Because when I read it, I felt like there were two different topics there. Everybody's okay with it?
I don't have any to do with this.
Okay. Oh, at the bottom of that same page, next to last line, it says Goffstown's cost per pupil is 3.8,000. Well, our average cost per pupil is 14,000 per pupil. I'm not sure that makes sense.
The 3,800, that sounds like the amount of what we receive for base adequacy.
Okay. So we might want to adjust some of that language because the sentence itself was confusing.
Okay. So we think it was the base adequacy. Brian?
That's, that number would make sense. That's how much it is. It's 3,700 and change.
Okay, and then the 14,000 per pupil, would that be an average? Because I know it's different for each school. So we can say the cost per pupil is, on average, 14,000? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, what's that say, please? Page four, second paragraph, halfway through it. It starts with student achievement. It's a line that starts student achievement. I think A R E should be O U R.
Okay. Student achievement.
And hour costs.
Okay.
Okay. Let me keep going here.
Is there more?
Yep, page five, one, two, three, fourth paragraph. It says below current standard. Okay, the fourth paragraph, third line, below current standard classroom. Should it say size? Limits? Because I know we are talking about the size, the square footage.
It's the limit for the number of students, so that's the same thing as size.
Oh, yeah. Okay. And the next line, state building aid is not available, and we are at a point where we will be mandated to provide. I'm thinking there should be a period after available. Take and out and put the word if we are at a point where we are mandated for full day kindergarten, there is no way this town will pass a building construction without state aid. Does that make more sense?
What does everybody say? Jared, did you want to say something?
Oh, not on what Ellen's saying. I guess my question is, is this for, is that accurately reflect the meeting that was had? Or is this just commentary for grammar that we're, that we're looking at?
Right now, it might be grammar, okay? I think it's grammar. Hold on.
Well, it was
That's it for me.
Had said.
Hey, that's it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. Anybody else?
Yeah, if I may, Ms. Chair, page nine at the very top. We're talking about Article Number Three. It has yes next to my name. I believe that should be a no. When we're talking about passing Article Three as recommended, I was no, not a yes. And I don't know if that actually needs to update the vote count of 801. I don't know if it would be 810 because there were no abstentions, just one nay.
Right, it says you're opposed.
It says in the second line, but if you look at the very first line, it says Tim Stetson, yes. Terry Fisher, yes. Jared Talbot, yes. Janelle O'Brien, yes.
Oh, I see. Yep. All right, so we just need to change that yes to a no. All right, is everybody good with the minutes?
Move to approve as amended.
I have a motion by Ellen. Do I have a second? Bye Ginny. Oh, sorry, Ginny waved your hand.
No, it's fine.
So any other discussion before I do roll call? All right, seeing none. Rheta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ginny?
You're muted, Ginny.
Yes. Thanks Ginny. And Heather, yes. So we're unanimous, Denise. All right, correspondence. Brian?
The only thing we received, I will speak to in superintendent's report, just a couple of updates on building projects, but I'll get to that during my superintendent's report.
Okay. Commendations, good news. Caleb, we'll have you start.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize both the Performing Arts Department and the Athletics Department in respectively musical and the current winter sports. They've both been doing great job following social distancing, mask wearing, all sorts of COVID precautions that are just helping us continue to stay open. I'd also like to recognize up here outreach. They had a really good speaker come in last Wednesday to talk about identity and what it means to be a good ally to people of color, especially in kind of this current political climate. And then lastly, I just wanted to commend the debate team from the high school. They competed this Saturday via Zoom, as things are right now. We beat Central narrowly lost by one point to White Mountain and four points to St. John's from Massachusetts. But overall, it was a great showing. And for our first year competing, it was a really good event.
Awesome. Thank you, Caleb. Ellen, I saw your hand up.
Yes. On something, and I don't know if it applies to Bartlett, I just know it applied to Maple Ave. Near and dear to my heart was the PFT and Maple Avenue's volunteer program that they have there. Maple Ave did receive for the second year in a row, the Blue Ribbon Award for volunteerism in the schools, as well as, they now call it a gold certificate, I think, for school community partnerships. And there were three local companies that contributed quite a bit, apparently, to activities that the PFT had done. And I know one big one was the work on the playground. And those three companies were Green Thumb, Vieri, Septic System and Site Work, and Sully's were recognized in that award, which I was thrilled to see that, that that had happened and that they're back and doing the volunteer accounting there. So that's good news.
It is.
And congratulations to them.
Thank you, Ellen, for letting us know that. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? All right, seeing none. Open up to public comment. Scott, do we have anyone?
None on the line.
All right, and Denise, you didn't receive any emails, correct? Okay. All right, so I'll close public comment. We're going to get on to our committee reports. Scott, finances?
Sure, let me just share my screen. All right, you should see the manifest summary sheet before you now, and the amount of $2,070,552.27. As usual, majority of that is in payroll, taxes, and benefits. We had a lot of special ed activity in terms of billing. So you'll see that some of these were for, you know, first semester of the school year. So Bedford School District, we have two students, and again, that's for half the year. At almost 69,000. North Star Education, that's a, we have multiple speech contracted service providers, and this particular one services multiple students, well over 40,000 for the first semester. Constellations is a out-of-district placement provider. And that one was almost 30,000. Lighthouse School, one student in January. And again, you see many of these that you would typically see for students. In terms of your general expenses, we had a couple of big ones. Primex, that's the workers' comp insurance premium for the year. Goffstown Truck Center was your January transportation. Prometheum Boards, that was grant funded, as well as the one below that. And BMO Harris Bank is the purchasing card or the credit card that we use. And that one, we procured audio and visual equipment. Again, that was grant funded. Home Depot Pro, that one was also, a lot of that, more than half of that was also grant funded because that was an auto scrubber. That's the ride-on machine that the custodians use to clean the floors. That was purchased through a grant. And Dead River was your propane. Amazon, a lot of that was also grant funded equipment as well. Stan Tech. This is the last bill from Stan Tech. This is for the Glen Lake project, almost $9,000, of which about $5,000 to $6,000 of that is going to get reimbursed. As you know, we had some challenges with the placement of those modulators. We hired Stan Tech to oversee that, corrective repairs, and we're getting that money back. So you got, that's a credit on that bill. Energy Management Consultants, you'll recall that we did a lighting retrofit at all of our schools with the exception of Glen Lake. And that was, that's going to be funded through the CRF. So once this project is now done, Laura will go in and we will request those funds from, from the trustees. And last but not least is EverSource, which is electricity. I did want to let, while I'm here on that subject of EverSource and electricity, I did, I did get the first bills for the new Glen Lake modular project, and the electrical charges were higher than what we, that I had thought they were going to be, for sure, and Randy as well. So I think we're going to be, we're not going to be budgeted well, you know, for Glen Lake electricity. Hopefully, we'll have, I'm pretty confident we'll have adequate monies in other lines to make up for that. But when we do our budget for FY '23, we're going to have to make changes to that one. That modular, everything is done off electricity, just so you know. The heat, air conditioning, you name it, everything is electrical. And the cost was more than what we thought it was going to be to do that. So just want to let you know. And then food service. We did have quite a bit in terms of our commodities at over $7,500. So that is your manifest for tonight. Are there any questions?
Go ahead, Ellen.
No, I was going to move approval.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? I just have a quick question, Scott. Was electricity a lot higher than you thought, or a little bit? Like, do we have some numbers?
I'll get back to you at another board meeting, but it's, I would say, I would use the word more a lot, not a little, because I did, I, I thought it would, that it would be more like $7,000 more, maybe 10, and it could be more like 20,000 a year. So again, you know, we, you know, one of the things that I did is I looked at also what we did at other portables, but some of our other portables have used propane as well. So it's, you can't make apples-to-apples comparisons.
Right.
So I feel pretty good, though, that we're going to be in fine shape, but just recognize that next year, we're going to more than likely have to raise that when we do our budget. So that's all. I just wanted that to be out there, not a surprise to anybody.
No, thank you. I appreciate it. All right, Ellen, I'll take your motion.
Move to approve manifest as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Janelle.
Hi, Janelle, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather? Yes, we're unanimous. Do you have any budget transfers, Scott?
I do. I have one, and I thought that I did this one earlier in the year, but when I went back, turns out that I didn't. So I'll share my screen with you. This one's a pretty simple one. So on your screen, this is a screenshot from our finance software. This would be budget transfer number seven, and it's at Mountain View Middle School. And what this is, is that we bought Big Ideas. It's an online math subscription. And we pretty much took that money from the book line at Mountain View. And I think we talked about that a few months back. But the budget transfer, because it's more than 10,000, the board has to approve that, that budget transfer. So we're taking it from the Mountain View book line, and we're putting it in electronic media, which is your online type books, in a way. Your online.
Move to approve.
All right, hang on one second, Ellen. Scott, can you put me back down so I can see you? It's okay. All right, so before I take your motion, Ellen, does anybody have any questions for Scott? All right, seeing none. So Ellen, you make a motion to approve?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Janelle.
All right, thank you, Janelle. All right, so any other further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we are unanimous in that. Do you have anything else for us, Scott?
I do not, unless there are any questions that any board members have. I would say one thing that I, I don't know if I share this with you, but we did hire a new staff accountant, I'm sorry, accounting clerk in the SAU. She started full-time today. Her name is Geraldine, and so far, so good. Everything is, is going well. But in case some of you, like Dan and others, do call into the business office occasionally, so if you do get a, you hear from her, she is our newest employee, and she's so far so good. She started last week, two weeks ago, part-time during doing some training, so we're excited to have her on board.
Awesome, thank you. All right, moving on. Budget Committee reporting. That's you, Jared.
No new meetings have taken place since our last meeting, and no meetings are currently scheduled.
All right, thank you. Next is policy review. We will meet on March 8th at 5:30, and that will be a remote meeting. And we do have first reads coming up later on. Ginny, seeing?
Yes, we reviewed the handbooks, and we just reviewed the high school, Glen Lake and Mountain View. The other two schools had some other things that they wanted to, to look at a little bit longer, so we'll be reviewing those in March. Basically, the
Hang on Ginny, sorry to interrupt you. That's further in the agenda that we'll do the handbooks.
Okay. I was just going to give you a little bit on, on handbooks, and we'll do that later. It's basically just housekeeping changes. And I did send all of the copies of the handbooks to you so that you could look over them for later in the meeting when we need to okay them to, to be sent off to the printer. We also had dialogue that took place between the administrators and all of us on, pretty much on academic integrity, tools that have been implemented to support the integrity and monitoring. Remote students shared, I thought this was interesting, that they believe that the hybrid students have the advantage of teachers being available. And the hybrid students expressed that the remote students had more flexibility as to when they took exams and time to complete their work. So it's kind of funny that, you know, one part thinks, oh, well, they have it easier. This part thinks it's easier. Midterms, the departments had common planning time, and they felt it pretty much was, turned out the way that it usually does. The kids have a chance to, in their, within their schedules, choose, or maybe sometimes have another day to take an exam. According to like past practice. Pretty much, there was a pre and post student survey that, before the pandemic, and it indicated that actually less, there was less of a concern of differences in the practice as far as the student learning took place. And there is planning for the summer programs. It's already underway. So there will be credit recovery and normal programs that go on the summer for students that need extra help and enrichment. And basically, that's it. There was a comment that said, basically, after working with kids for many years, we find that they're much more resilient than we as adults give them credit for being. So that's pretty much that. Anybody have any questions, or does anybody else want to chime in to get something that I may have skipped that they feel is important?
I'll just add that I thought the, the dialogue that we had about the, how school was being administered over this past year was very interesting. I thought there was a lot of thoughtful questions and answers back and forth. So it was, you know, digging into what's happening in areas that are being improved. So I thought that was somewhat unique in this meeting. Usually, it's a report out, but this was really a dialogue, so that was an interesting part of the meeting.
And we did have the administrators from the school. We did have guidance. So we did have, you know, a wide range of people that were there. So I thought that was helpful, too, to give us the, the range of who was giving us information.
Thank you, Ginny. And you have a meeting, next meeting?
Our next meeting is March 8th at 7:00 PM, and that will be a Zoom meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to superintendent's report. Brian?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to lead off with some good news. We're always proud of Mr. Huff, but Justin Huff, our athletic director, has recently been recognized by the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. And Justin was just, completed the process of becoming a certified athletic administrator. To earn this distinction, Justin has demonstrated the highest level of knowledge and expertise in the field of interscholastic athletic administration. This voluntary certification process included, included a thorough exam, evaluation of the candidate's educational background, experience, and professional contributions, and included a written exam. So congratulations to Justin. And he just continues to exceed our expectations. We're very proud of Justin. I mentioned during correspondence that there are a couple of building projects that we wanted to make sure the board was aware of. The Woodland Village Development is proceeding. This development is 13 buildings. It's a mix of townhouses and apartments, and it's going to include 74 one and two-bedroom units. This is the one, you'll recall, we've been talking about this for a couple of years. This is down off of Bog Road. So we wanted to make sure that was on the board's radar. And then this other one is, was new to me. I don't know, Scott, if you were aware of this one, if we have this in the queue. But there's a six-lot subdivision featuring creating five new lots, so it's one current lot that's being split into six. It's off Montalona Road on map 12, lot 10. And at this point, so we're looking at five new single-family homes. This is scheduled for the February 11th Planning Board meeting. And if anyone wanted to provide comments, there's comments available through February 2nd, so tomorrow. We sent out, but I wanted to make sure I shared with the public, we're getting our next round of Esser Cares money, Esser Two is what we're calling it. And Goffstown is getting $1,127,612. So that's good news. We'll take it. And New Boston is getting $141,925. So I wanted everyone to know that that was happening. Tomorrow, we will have a remote learning day. I've already called it, given that we're looking at between 12 and 18 inches of snow. Hopefully, the wind will be not too bad, but at this point, the, the storm does look to be a very significant snow event. Tomorrow, during that snow event, tomorrow afternoon into early evening, all of the administrators are meeting, and we will be working on a process that we've started and conversations we've been having about the evolution of public education. And what do we keep? What do we get rid of? What things change moving forward? And to really start thinking about how we And to really start thinking about how we will change our practices in a post-pandemic um, time period. Even though that does in fact feel like a ways off for us still. But I wanted everyone to know that we've had a lot of conversations, and we're looking to start to codify that through some uh, work with all of our administrators tomorrow. So Mrs. Berry and I will uh, will lead that process and look forward to some robust uh, conversations. I wanted to let everyone know, and um, because Mrs. Berry's on the call, she'd be happy to answer any questions. We're moving forward with a new platform called IXL. And this is being integrated into both the hybrid and fully remote learning environments. IXL is a curriculum software that combines a comprehensive K-12 curriculum, real-time diagnostics, personalized guidance, as well as analytics that teachers can use to personalize instruction and provide targeted um, supports and services to meet individual learning needs. This program integrates with our Wonders Program as well as Everyday Math 4 and the Big Ideas Program. So that's something that, as uh, an outcome of shifting to remote learning and enhancing all of our support systems for kids, we are moving forward with that program. If anyone's interested, you can learn more at www.ixl.com. We've updated our travel and quarantine guidelines to include information for people who have had the vaccine as well as people who have been previously positive. So those changes were made. The document was updated, and it is on the website. Uh, this is an example of something that um, under the authorization that this board has given me, I have uh, taken action on this. At the request of Principal Piska at Maple Lab Elementary School, I approved four additional hours each week for our library para. Um, this is a part-time position. We've had a lot of hours that we haven't been able to fill or to use, so this is well within budget. But the board will recall that Mrs. Piska's Library Media Specialist is actually one of the remote instructors. So that school has had less library time available. So this seemed like a very reasonable request on Suzanne's um, part. So I have approved that. Um, Scott was looking for, it sounds like there's an awful lot of legislative activity around the fix that we have asked for with respect to free and reduced numbers. I think at this point, Scott, I don't know that we're gonna need to send letters to our members of the General Court. I think this is something that's solidly on everyone's radar. But we will um, continue to, to look at that closely. The next bill that I wanted to bring up, and by the way, there, there are a lot of bills um, that pertain to public education right now. But this is probably the most concerning one right now to me, is House Bill 20. Which um, is, this is a bill that creates um, the opportunity for public tax dollars to be used to subsidize elementary and secondary private, religious, or homeschooled um, through the creation of vouchers, track, tax credits, and tax subsidies. And in general, um, my position is, has been crystal clear over many, many decades that I believe public education is not being funded properly, that the state does not meet their constitutional obligation. So to take any money away from public schools or to create opportunities that incentivizes people to leave public schools is deeply concerning to me. This bill is going to be heard by House Ed tomorrow. And um, I don't often provide legislative input, but uh, Mr. Gross and I will be um, attending this hearing tomorrow and registering in opposition. I do want to be clear, I don't disagree with any parent's individual choice about choosing to send their um, their student to a private school, a religious school, or to homeschool. I just firmly and strongly believe that public schools are underfunded. And without any additional money coming into the overall system, this likely has the effect of impacting. And there are a lot of concerns about how this is going to be overseen. And um, there's just a lot of concerns in general around this bill. So because I believe that the $3,800 that we receive is insufficient, any legislative activity that takes money out of that fund and sends it to private schools, religious schools, or supports um, homeschooling subsidies is something that I do not support. So I did want to let the board know that um, that will be happening. The New Hampshire School Boards Association is um, completely against this bill, as is the New Hampshire School Administrators Association. So I'm going to share my screen and look at the COVID data. Okay, it didn't come up there. Let me try this one more time.
Brian, I was also gonna say that I will send more information on that bill to school board members in case they too wanna either listen in on that hearing, or if they want to uh, make a public comment. Or you can simply say you're uh, in favor or opposed to any bill also. So I'll send that to you this evening.
Okay, could everyone see moving between the phases?
Yes.
Thank you. So um, just a few things to share. Um, to date, I want to talk a little bit about the presence of clusters. So we have been identified as a cluster at Bartlett from the cases that we had. Um, to date, we've had two confirmed clusters, one at Glen Lake and one at Bartlett. The board will recall that I shut Bartlett down and moved to full remote for seven days. And because of the transmission that occurred, um, we were identified as a cluster. So at this point, we've had two clusters to date. With respect to the vaccine, I, I do have um, despite the fact that this process is going incredibly slowly, the state is only receiving 17,000 doses a week. So at this point, um, unless the number of vaccines that the state starts to receive, this is going to take an incredibly long time to get everyone vaccinated. And I shared with the board that when the um, DHHS changed Phase 1B to include those 65 um, and over instead of 75, as was their original plan, they put another 140,000 people in line um, in front of teachers. We have had school nurses get vaccinated, and there have been some recent changes that some people who provide mental health services, as well as some special education staff, have been able to get in under Phase 1B. The state has not offered really good guidance about this. Um, and in fact, Mrs. McGrath spent time today talking to the folks up at the state and uh, have gotten some clarification around that. I also think, if you look at number three here, for the first time, I'm starting to see some preliminary movement towards vaccine options for children under 16. Some of the trials are moving forward, so that is encouraging. So hopefully, with both the Pfizer and the Moderna um, vaccine, that we'll start to see some of our students um, be able to get vaccinated under the age of 16. The numbers in general, and I, everything remains in the red. But I think we are trending in the right direction in the state. Uh, right now, 4,886 active cases for a case count of 564 per 100,000. Remember, anything over 100 is considered substantial community spread and is in the red. The positivity rating is down. This is a good encouraging sign, 4.9%. Hillsborough County, 606 per 100,000. In Goffstown, 84 cases, which is 464 per 100,000. And New Boston has trended down a little bit to 14, which is 242 per 100,000. I've already talked about those pieces. Um, this graph, you've seen a number of times when I talk about our staffing shortages. You're looking at the delta between the orange line and the gray line. This is our need for sub-coverage. This is our ability to procure sub-coverage. So this delta is being made up by people giving up prep periods. Um, or other time that they have. Sorry about that. I had an Adobe thing pop up there. And um, we continue to struggle with covering um, absences. Support staff, same story. Again, you're looking at the delta between the orange line and the gray line. We needed 201 subs. We were only able to get 89. But thus far, we have continued to be able to make it work. New Boston, you can see their lines are very close together. They've essentially been able to cover their needs. Um, with professional staff, support staff, it's a little, um, a little more problematic. But you can see between 37 and 22, the numbers are pretty small. So that's the update on those numbers. And now I'm gonna take you to our website. And take a look at the numbers here. So this is, um, again, this is our summary data. We're at 158 with um, 15 active cases at this point. Uh, two at Bartlett, one at Glen Lake, three at the high school, four at Maple Lab, four at Mountain View, one at New Boston Central School. And if you click on the data by case, um, I wanted to show, we have a new um, thing that we included today. And MC and I decided that this was the best way for us to do this. We had a um, a circumstance over the weekend that we had to quarantine um, some athletic teams. And we're counting that in our case count, but we're not including the number. But I wanted to capture the quarantine of nine kids due to athletics. So if we have other ones like this, um, where this was actually a student from another school who was the positive, but it in, ended up putting out nine of our student athletes. So I wanted um, everyone to see that that was new, that was different. Um, but at this point, as you can see, um, today, we had two cases. We tend to have one, two a day. Sometimes we have three or more. Um, but as I have said a number of times, if you continue to look at the zeros here, this tells you how many of these cases have not been in school. All the zeros, for the most part, are kids that were already being quarantined by their parents. So they've had a positive case or multiple positive cases in the family. And um, as a result, it did not have an impact on us. And again, you can see going up through here, a lot of zeros. So um, we continue to appreciate parents keeping kids home, parents staying home, keeping siblings home if they've potentially been exposed. And uh, overall, everyone, I think, has done a, a good job. And I'm hopeful that we're gonna start to see the numbers continue to tick down a little bit, which will um, allow us to start thinking about when um, and how we're ready to consider um, a potential move to the next phase. For us, in the hybrid model would be Phase 3. But we're not there yet, and we continue to have concerns around the new variants such as the South Africa um, one, as well as the UK one that look like they have um, more significant transmissibility. But I see that uh, Ginny has her hand up. So Heather, uh, happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Brian. Go ahead, Ginny.
I'm sorry, Brian, I didn't mean to rush you. I'm just wondering with seeing that information and um, people wanting kids to get back into school and for us to move to the next phase, would it be important to take this information and having s- school districts get together and um, go to the people that be, that make the decisions about vaccines? And really let them know that not having teachers vaccinated really is one of the big problems in not being able to go to the next phase just because um, we don't have the people to go to a next phase. As long as teachers are not vaccinated. And it, it looks like the way the vaccination program is going now, the teachers probably will get vaccinated in time for summer vacation, almost. Um, so I'm wondering if anything like that would be helpful if the school communities got together and showed them some of the um, uh, statistics that we have on how this is affecting the adults, which is really affecting the, the student population in not being able to move forward because um, the teachers are not getting vaccinated. Just a thought.
Yeah, I, I, I do think that's a good thought, Ginny. Because the decision has already been made um, with respect to lowering the age of Phase 1B. And I, I do understand the logic behind it. I understand what they were seeking to accomplish. Um, I think the pressure really needs to be, how come we're not getting more vaccines? So out of a state that has 1.3 million residents, if we continue to get 15, 17,000 vaccines a week, and remember, everybody has to have two shots. So it's really, you're only affecting, you know, ha- half of the number in terms of people who will actually get vaccinated. That's the concerning part. Um, I would just let you know that we're, we're not ready to talk yet about moving to a new phase. But this is something that is omnipresent with us, the need to, to uh, restrict to a more um, to a, a, a less in-person phase if we had outbreaks or clusters or anything like that, as well as to move forward. I do think it's incredibly encouraging. There was a re, uh, a, a study that came out. I think it was in the American um, Academy of Pediatrics Journal that they're not seeing transmissibility from students to staff, which um, is congruent with our experience. We have not seen a single case yet out of all those cases of a student infecting a teacher. We have seen teachers infect other teachers, and we have seen teachers infect students. But we have not had a single case yet of students um, transmissive, uh, transmitting the virus to the adults. So I think that is encouraging. Um, that again, continues to show that the mitigation measures do continue to work and continue to be effective. But uh, to your point, Ginny, I, I am very much in the camp of teachers need to be vaccinated. Teachers have lived with the anxiety of, what if I get COVID? What if I bring COVID home to my family? What if I make someone I love sick? Um, this is a, a constant fear that, that teachers and support staff have. But I understand that there's unfortunately a, a shortage, and we don't have enough vaccines at this point. But I, I think your timeline is also probably accurate. I, I think that um, I was originally hoping that I'd be able to roll my sleeve up, um, which of course, I do have short sleeves, so I'm, I'm ready. Um, but uh, we're, you know, we're hoping that I, I think at this point, it may be more likely that it's May that we're looking at our first shot. And um, probably the second dose sometime in, in late June or somewhere in that, in that window.
Thank you, Brian. Go ahead, Ellen. I see your hand up.
Well, I hope um, somehow the state gets their act together with giving out, getting the appointments. I have had to register three times since the wet Friday that I, my category was able to sign up. And I have yet to get an email back with an appointment. Um, and my husband got his first time. Somebody contacted him today, this evening, and he was able to get an appointment. But it's, it's very difficult. And if that continues and our teacher, our entire school staff has the same kind of problems, that's an issue.
We, we actually think-
It'll take a long time.
There, there's some very early discussion about the ability for schools to maybe um, be able to do their own um, administration of the vaccine. It's, I, I think that uh, we're not quite there yet. But uh, we had some original conversations with our fire chiefs about whether we might be able to partner with our, some of our local um, EMTs and paramedics. One of our nurses, our nurse in New Boston, was trained to be a uh, COVID shot giver. So we're, we're hoping that we might be able to do something for our, our faculty on campus so that they don't actually have to go through the um, process of enrolling and going to one of the fixed location sites. There are 13-
Thank you. I'm, I'm so happy to hear that.
We're hopeful. We're, we're not quite there yet, but um, if there's a possibility, we will chase after that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Anybody else have any questions for Brian before we move on, or comments? All right, C and N. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We have no old business tonight, but we do have new business, which is just discussing Saturday's deliberative session. Brian, Scott, did you wanna start with that?
Yeah, I, I would, I would first just share um, thank you to the board for not postponing. I think it was um, very appropriate for us to hold our deliberative session. I think that uh, Mr. Gross and the, the folks from the town did a great job setting everything up. I felt it was very safe, very appropriate. Um, we had good systems put in place. The town does a nice job running the elections, and the supervisors of the checklist did a great job. So I'm just uh, we're appreciative that we're able to have that meeting and uh, get it done. And the town, Scott, did they uh, postpone till Thursday?
Yes, they did, Brian.
Okay, so there, the town's deliberative won't happen tomorrow night. Um, but they'll go Thursday, and then we'll proceed to the vote. I did want to let- I did want to let this board know that the New Boston School Board decided to postpone their deliberative until May. The big driver for that was the Select Board had already made that action. They moved their deliberative to May, and they moved the vote until Tuesday, June eighth. So that will impact our April SAU Board meeting a little bit potentially because the school board election won't have happened by that time. So by the Executive Order Number Eighty Four, any board member who was up will continue. And I believe that's Mr. Schmidt. He's the only one. So Bill will stay in his seat. He is running. There were two people that signed up to run, so it is a contested race. So we won't know until June eighth who the new school board member or existing school board member is. But I wanted this board to know that New Boston has, did choose to delay their deliberative.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Anybody else want to comment on Saturday's meeting? Go ahead, Ginny.
There we go. Was there any budget board activity after the meeting on Saturday?
There was no Budget Committee meeting after hours. They scheduled one, Ginny, believe it or not, for Wednesday. And they're going to have to reschedule it. So the Budget Committee had a virtual Zoom meeting scheduled for Wednesday. In the event that if there was any amendments to either the school or town warrant articles, the Budget Committee could then take them up and then revote. They're going to have to now postpone that meeting to probably Friday in case there's any amendments made on the town side. But right now, since there wasn't any changes to the warrant articles, those votes stand. So for those board members who are not aware, there was a vote taken, and it was a twelve zero on the budget and ten two on the Capital Reserve Fund. Those recommendations will be printed on the ballot as such. The only time there's ever a revote is if the dollar amount changes at the deliberative session. And since it didn't happen, those votes proceed.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
Yes, I would just say for Jared, just keep your eyes open on your emails. They're probably, you know, they'll probably schedule a tentative meeting on Friday, Jared, because of this.
This is all news to me, Scott. I had not known that we actually had something scheduled for Wednesday. Predetermined. So yeah, I never received that. So I will have to reach out to call in the team to find out what the heck is going on. But I'll take that responsibility.
Okay. Sorry about that. I thought you knew.
Alan, I saw your hand up.
Yes, and I or Tim, because I don't know when Tim's leaving, am I still an alternate to budget? Or is that changed and we'll just reorganize after March?
I think at this time, you're still the alternate unless until March.
Okay, so Jared will just let me know if there's a meeting that he cannot get to.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And I want to thank Jared for presenting the CRF and also for Scott and Brian for presenting the budget and talking about COVID. You guys did a great job. So thank you. So if we're done with deliberative, I'm going to move on to first read policies. So you have a packet of first read policies. So this is just an information for you to see what the subcommittee is bringing forward. So the first one is DJB-A. And this was brought back to the subcommittee from our last first read. So the blue is where Scott had tried to capture the feeling of the board. So read through that, and then you can see the yellow was highlighted as well. And what we're going to start doing is at our next school board meeting, if you have questions or concerns, we're going to start discussing the first reads at the next school board meeting before the second read, which is the third school board meeting. So the next Yes, yes.
Just make sure I'm understanding. The first policy read, I thought was when we're supposed to ask questions. And then the second policy read is when we voted. But am I completely mistaken about my memory of this?
Usually the first read is information to let board members know what the subcommittee has come up with. And then it's supposed to be a discussion at the next board meeting, which we haven't done.
Oh, okay. But the second read is after that?
Right, at the third.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I know it can complicate it. But this way, it gives everybody a chance to read through them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the next policy is EEAA. We changed the name. It's now Use of Video and Audio Systems. And as you can see, we spent a lot of time on this policy, changing to try to reflect where we are today. And then the next one is JFAB. Now, yesterday afternoon, Denise sent you guys a revised version of JFAB because we were trying to get the feeling of the full board. And we talked a lot about this in the subcommittee. We came up with a compromise. But there are some numbers that will be changed. So in two A, it is fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And in B, it's fiscal year twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. So what we're trying to do, instead of starting the tuition for seniors, is giving families advanced notice for planning. If a senior leaves Goffstown, they can continue in Goffstown. If they're a senior this year, they'll be grandfathered in at tuition free. If they're a senior before or during the next school year, and the definition of senior is in policy IKF, and it goes by what credits you have, that would be tuition free as well. So we're trying to give families a full year and this year advanced notice. We added number four, and we added a full paragraph trying to be consistent with some of our other non-resident policies that at the discretion of the school board, if a family leaves with a senior thirty calendar days before the end of school, we could waive the tuition. Again, that's at the discretion of the school board. That last sentence where it starts with tuition charges, we're not sure if we want to keep that or not. So we can let you guys think about it. And we can talk about that in a couple of weeks. So we just try to be flexible and compromise with everybody on that. We did spend a lot of time talking about JFAB. And then the last policy is JICDR. And we had the definition of suspensions that is all highlighted in yellow. Hang on one second, Jared. I'll call you your name. We had Brian review that, and that was the only change on that. So Jared, you had a question or comment?
Yes, Ms. Chair, just going back to JFAB for a moment.
Yes.
Did this policy or as written for our first read, has this been sent to Caleb? Because I would love to get his views from the student body on this proposed change. I just want to make sure that he has the material to provide for that conversation.
He has all the policies. They're online, and he has a copy of tonight's.
Great, thank you.
I do. Thank you for checking that, Jared.
All right. Yes, go ahead, Alan.
I'm on the JICDR, the regulation. Do our school, do we have both the availability of both in-school and out-of-school suspensions?
Brian? Yes.
We do. So in-school suspension, we, what happens? Is there a specific location where that child goes? And what do they do there?
So it's a little different at the middle school and the high school. The middle school has a location that is a standing fixed location that is staffed. And when we don't have students that are on in-school suspension, that person is out and about, visible in classrooms, working with teachers, et cetera. At the high school, we, this year, we're not using a physical location. It tends to be a little more mobile. So we often will have students, it could be in the library, or sometimes it's in, the Grizzly Den is a room that they call it. But we have other kind of locations that change where students have access to support and are monitored and supervised to get their missing work done.
Thank you, Brian. Are you set, Alan?
Well, I've always been concerned about out-of-school suspensions because I feel like it's just the day off. Is this policy, is it within here for us to have that discussion as to what an out-of-school suspension looks like, what's required of the student, that kind of thing? I'm not sure. I've always had a problem with out-of-school suspensions. Can someone help me with that? If this is the right time to ask that question or not?
Brian, do you have any?
Well, I would say her comments are more ideological, so that's probably more appropriate for the discussion before the board takes action. But there are some of these, I don't necessarily disagree with Ellen, that out-of-school suspension is an imperfect punishment. But if we have students that either have illegal substances, are involved in fights, whatever it may be, we do want them out of the building. And it's as much for, you know, making it clear that the behavior in question is not tolerated. Many years ago, we used to be able to do more things that I would identify and classify as restitution. I know I'm dating myself here, but I used to be able to have students go to the dump and pick up trash. And there used to be more kind of alternative restorative justice type of approaches that for liability reasons and as well as probably just people's beliefs, we don't have any of those kinds of options anymore.
So we don't have an off-campus suspension program?
We do not.
We do not. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alan. So read through the policies. We'll discuss them at the next board meeting on February twenty-second. Anything you want to change or questions? You know, we'll discuss it at that time. And then on March first, we'll do the second read to move them forward. And I just want to mention that with the JFAB, this came about because we're getting more seniors moving out of the district. And it's eventually, it's costing money. So we need to change something, and we're trying to be respectful of people who have planned to move out sooner. I mean, we found out last time that we're getting two to five students planning in the summer to leave. And at fifteen thousand and change a person, that adds up quickly. So I know it's hard for people to do changing, but we do need to do something in the future. So read through it and see if you want to change any of the language. We'll talk about that at the next meeting. So moving on to student and parent handbook. So Ginny, this is you. And I know we were all emailed last Tuesday, all the changes that they did.
Right. And does anybody have any questions or anything they'd like to discuss before we go ahead? Okay, if nothing, you have nothing, I'd like to bring forth a recommendation from the committee to approve the handbooks for twenty-one, twenty-two for Goffstown High School, Glen Lake, and Mountain View, knowing that the other two we will be reviewing in March.
Okay. Well, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
Thank you, Ginny. All right, Alan, you have a second. Anybody have any other questions for Ginny before I take roll call? All right, see you none. I'll take roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather? Yes. So we're unanimous. Thank you, Ginny, for all that hard work going through those handbooks. All right, next is Board Authorization Request. Board motion is needed to grant continued authorization to the superintendent under the superintendent's emergency operation plan for COVID-19 as a temporary regulation to policy EBCF, Pandemic Epidemic Emergencies, and to grant the superintendent or his designated authorization to respond at his or her discretion to change in public health circumstances, and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adapt school policies as needed until the next successful school board meeting. Do I have a motion? So Janelle motion and Alan second. So I'll do roll call.
Okay.
Retta?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry? Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather? Yes, we're unanimous. The next one is a motion to grant the business administrator authorization to make payments out of sequence and to notify the board of such payments at the next scheduled school board meeting. Do I have a motion? Alan, and who's the second?
Janelle.
Janelle, thank you, Janelle. Okay, I'll do a roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather? Yes. We're unanimous. So now we have school staffing.
Mr. Gross, if you could pull the staffing sheet up, please, or all at the end here. Hold on. Okay. So just for notifications, track changes for Sarah Matital, one of our terrific school nurses. So congratulations to Sarah. We have a leave of absence for Maple Ave staff member from February twenty-one until June first. So presumably, we'll be back for the very end of the school year, as well as a long-term substitute during that period of time. We have a couple of notifications, Scott, if you can just go down a little bit. Just notifications of unpaid leave. And this is, these are examples of that carryover from the COVID leave that people were able to take, but at this point, they're unpaid. And the schools have done a good job accommodating people and coming up with the coverage as best they're able to. So no approvals needed by the board. And the unpaid leave, these are ones that I've already approved. So the board will recall that under the emergency authorization, we're not bringing the unpaid leave request to you. So that's all there is tonight. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Scott. All right. Any other business that may legally come before us? Anyone? Oh, go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, just one thing that I'd like to discuss from our last meeting. I'm not sure if other members also received it from some of our constituents, but I know that this board has definitely been nonpartisan, as we've discussed most of our issues. When we did have our state reps come, if some feedback I got was, it got very partisan during that conversation. And I didn't know how other people felt about that. And if people did at least interpret it the same way, perhaps we might need to ensure that next time we reach out to our state reps to try to keep it to some of the facts and figures versus some of the back and forth that occurred. Again, this is just information that I received from some of my constituents, and I wanted to bring it up as a talking point to see if any other members received some feedback from people they talked to in the town.
Thank you, Jared. Actually, I did. I had some parents reach out to me the next day. They were not happy that it got political, and I was listening and waiting. And if it was going to continue, I was going to stop it. I felt what was said was handled and it stopped, but I had planned to stop it if it continued. And I do agree, this was not the platform for that. And maybe in the future, we can somehow nicely remind our guests that this is just answering questions for the school and not to get into politics. um, remind our guests that this is just answering questions for the school and not to get into politics. Um, but yeah, I did have some, and actually some parents just got so frustrated, they got off and didn't come back on.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Jared, for bringing that up. Ellen, go ahead.
Uh, you just said it. I wanna thank Jared for raising that. I did get some feedback and thank you, Heather, for your comments. Uh, it bothered me as an individual without hearing from the public. But uh, thank you for your comments and thank you, Jared.
Uh, anything else? All right. We have no non-public, correct, Brian?
Nope.
And um, as long as we don't have a snowstorm, February 22nd, we should be at the high school at seven o'clock. And if for nothing else, we can uh, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jared. Who seconded it?
Tim.
Tim. All right. Thank you, Tim. I will do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe in the snow. Enjoy.